Welcome, everyone. I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. After that, led by Alderman at Large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask you to be a part of our meeting, Lord. Lord, we also want to pray for the many children, victims, that have been shot recently. Lord, I just pray that you would be with the families, Lord, comfort them in their time of need. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes for the May 17, 2022 meeting.
Second?
We have motion by Alderman Hoots, a second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an amendment to the City of South Haven's comprehensive plan. Mr. Nick Manley.
You may recall at the prior meetings, we advertised this as part of the commercial medical district associated with medical marijuana. This is the first step in performing the, I mean, informing the actual zone is making it consistent with our comprehensive plan. It has been advertised as required. Tonight, we just asked for the amendment to be approved, which will just note specifically that medical marijuana would be allowed, or medical marijuana dispensaries would be allowed within that commercial medical zone, so that anything that's done prior or subsequent to this will be consistent with our comprehensive plan, as noted by the Attorney General's opinion to the mayor of April this year. So tonight, we need authorization to approve the plan, the amendment to the plan, that simple amendment. And then also, since it is a hearing, we need to ask anybody in the public if they want to speak on the plan as well.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, a second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion among the board?
The only question I had, if we agree to the amendment, does that mean we agree to the lines of the?
No, this is not forming any of the boundaries. This is just setting forth that this is like permitted, this will be a use in the overview of the district itself, but not tonight. We're not forming, even the next item too, we're not forming any of the boundaries at this point. This is simply setting up the zone along with the amendment to the comprehensive plan, so it's consistent with that plan.
Any other discussion among the board? Is there any, anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Please come forward, tell us who you are.
My name is Tabitha Esses, and I'm Operations Manager with Green Magnolia dispensaries, and we are here-
Let me, excuse me, just a second, just to be fair, this is not a, this is not a time to sell your company. We have an enormous amount of companies like yours that have reached out to the city. Obviously, with this being a new thing for Mississippi, this is new, everyone's wanting to get their foot out, so just be fair with us.
Yes, sir.
This discussion is clearly about the comprehensive plan. Let's keep it to that, okay?
Yes, sir, I am. And so what I would like to do actually is present to the city our proposed, will you kind of do that please? Location for consideration to be amended in the zone. We actually have a property at 212 East Goodman Road, and we would just like for it to be considered. We are a thousand feet from the north, south, and west side of the borders. So we're just asking for consideration when you are debating about it to please include us.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions specifically among the board? Thank you for coming forward, appreciate that. Anyone else who would like to speak regarding the comprehensive plan amendment? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the resolution for the city to create a commercial medical zone.
Yeah, following up on that, this resolution will just make a separate zone in our zoning ordinances that creates a medical zone. As to Alderman Jerome's point earlier, this is still not creating the boundaries for the zone. This is just simply creating the zone itself that will then, at a future date, be used to rezone properties for the commercial medical district, which would be consistent for dispensaries. So tonight, all we're doing is creating a new zone, which was also discussed in the Attorney General opinion to the mayor from April this year that was mentioned, mentioned and opined by the Attorney General's office. So once again, this is also a hearing at this part too, so we might go and speak, we have to let them speak on the same issue. But all this is tonight is not creating any zone, I mean, it's not creating any boundaries or rezoning any properties. It is simply creating the medical district, I mean, the medical, commercial medical zone for future rezoning of those properties for that, for that zone that's being created tonight.
Second. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding the creation of a commercial medical zone for the first time in the City of South Haven? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a work authorization for engineering scope. Mr. Dan Cordell.
Mayor, Board. Tonight, we're asking for approval for engineering services related to the extension of the multi-use trail from Nail Road up to May Boulevard along Getwell on the east side. It'll also include some drainage improvements, piping, underground collection of the stormwater that's now ditched in that section. It will complete the connectivity in that area and also connect to the Spring Fest area that we have coming out. So it'll basically put a multi-use trail extending sidewalk in front of Getwell.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion?
The development paying for the sidewalk, or aren't they doing the, or was I wrong about that?
No, this is on the, this is on the park side. Yeah, the developments are put-
Oh, the other side, okay, okay.
Right, like you got the missing piece where the trail goes through Snowden connects at May Boulevard.
I got you, yeah.
But yeah, this is the, the missing piece like Dan was talking about in front of the Spring Fest parking lot, where eventually you'll have concert goers, you know, will enter by foot that way and go in the main. The new entrance will be added to the amphitheater, so this is on the east, the east side, yeah.
West side? It's the west side?
No, it's on the east side.
Side of Getwell.
There's already a sidewalk, there's a sidewalk on the west side.
Gotcha.
On the east side, we're putting a multi-use trail down.
You have it on the, on Nail, the trail ends-
Right.
At Nail and Getwell, where it ends right there, this would give connectivity there back north, where you go in the main entrance to Spring Fest and go in the amphitheater, and then it would connect back to May, yeah. Any other discussion?
It's not going on the bridge, is it?
Yeah, connect to the-
It'll all go all the way to the bridge.
Yeah, it's the piece from, from, the bridge is on May.
Right.
So it's the piece from May to Nail that's missing, yeah. But it'll connect them all. That way they'll, after that piece is done, then they'll all be connected. Whitney and I have just recently submitted the next four-year MPO plan, and in part of that has pedestrian trails, and we were awarded the pedestrian trail to go south of there as well. So then that will go south from Nail down to Church, and then that will connect to the Getwell South Widening Project that, well, according to, if the numbers work out right, it'll be bid as an alternate. But then that would connect that to those paths too, so then you would actually have connectivity all the way from May to Starland.
Awesome.
If we're waiting on, we gotta have good numbers on the Getwell. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a resolution for sanitation assessment.
Yeah, this resolution is just authorizing assessments and or leans for those individuals who have not paid the sanitation fee, as approved by the city. As you know, this is one of the first ones we've had in a while, so they were quite frequent at one point. But now I think the system's been adjusted to where they are being paid in a timely manner for the most part. But tonight, we need approval for this so that the Public Works Department can either file the lien and/or assess the car tag for those properties who have not paid that sanitation fee.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to claim private property.
Mr. Mayor, move, we adopt a resolution granting authority to claim private property as presented on the state. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any, in any of the properties that would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda. It's Whitney Cook.
Yes, sir. The first item we have on the agenda is application for design review for a full-service car wash. This is going to be on Lot Two of any CE commercial subdivision. You'll see in the highlighted red area right there, it's on the northeast corner of Church Road and Elmore. Previously, we did approve the conditional use permit to allow the car wash there. What you see attached here is the elevations proposed were a couple of changes requested by the Planning Commission. One specifically was the internal lights of the car wash to be toned down and be able to turn off so it wasn't intrusive to the neighboring properties, and it was initially approved or submitted with architectural shingles, and they asked it to go to a bronze roof. Everybody else found it as a very attractive elevation, which I don't see right now, but it's up there somewhere. Anyhow, it was approved with those changes. They did concede to that. Landscaping and the photometrics were sufficient with our requirement, so with those changes, it was voted unanimously in favor by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number one on the planning agenda as presented tonight. Second.
On item one, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is a conditional use permit to allow beauty shop to be located at 332 Goodman Road East. This is from Tangles, which is currently in 344 Goodman Road East Suite, which is going to be on the north side of Goodman Road, just west of Elmore. This is basically a formality. Tangles was there before the criteria came in that you had to have that conditional use and that radius rule. With wholesale nutrition moving out, there's some shifts for Hollywood Pet Feed as well as Tangles, so they're going to occupy a new unit and to take that grandfathering away and put them in formal compliance. We did request that they come in to do the conditional use permit. They are compliant with the two within the stated zone and within that half-mile radius rule. So with that being said, it was, it was voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion on item two, Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is subdivision approval for Lakes of Nicholas Section L Phase Two. This is going to be 13.7 acres with 19 lots ranging in size from 20,125 square feet to 47,800 square feet. You'll see the highlighted area. This is the last portion of the northern section along College Road. These are your larger lots. There's also a buffer line that's been placed as contingent along the Castle Ridge part of the subdivision. It was compliant with the overall PUD as well as the comprehensive plan, and Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number three on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is for a revision to Snowden Farms Phase B District 16 Lot Seven. Recently, we approved this lot right here. It's where the mixed-use four-story buildings with the skybridge is going. There was a 50-foot right-of-way proposed and approved at the north end to put that internal street coming off of Getwell Road. They did decide after the approval that they wanted to go to a 60-foot to create a wider area and possibly boulevard that. We had no problems with that, but it's something beyond what a Scrutiner's error could handle, so it's compliant with everything that's already been approved. It's just simply widening that right-of-way from a 50-foot to a 60-foot, and it was voted unanimously approved by Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number four on the planning agenda. Second.
On four, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is subdivision approval for Pinewood Phase Five. You'll see up on the screen where this location is aerial-wise. You see this is doing the final stretch over to Tulahoma Road. This phase consists of 18.643 acres, has 60 residential lots with two common open spaces, one being a large detention area along Tulahoma Road and the other being the Boulevard entrance. The lot sizes are compliant with the overall PUD that was approved in 2018. The stipulations we have placed on this one that at the time of this approval, we need to put the construction entrance on Tulahoma Road, pull it away from Getwell Road, clean that area up, and let those residents have full service with no construction access on that side. It was, they did concede to that. Also, a contingency was that the improvements to the landscape and the fencing on the Getwell roadside had to be installed, which they did meet that criteria before the meeting. And the final stipulation was a full screening landscape plan for the detention area that's going to be along Tulahoma Road, which they agreed to as well. So once those comments were made, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item number five on the planning agenda. Second.
On item number five, we have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is for Phase Six, the same subdivision. It's just the property due north, what you see right here highlighted in red from Section Five that we just approved. This section is 21.386 acres and has 73 lots. There are no common open spaces with this one, but the lot sizes and the design of the street system is compliant with the PUD that was approved in 2018. Same criteria placed on this one as the last one, mainly the shift to the Tulahoma Road side to do the construction entrance. Everything was agreed upon at that time and voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item number six on the planning agenda. Second.
On item six, we have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is a request to revise the existing Freeport Industrial Park, specifically Lots 35 and 36. This is going to be on the southwest corner of Tulane and State Line Road, which you see highlighted in red here. And basically, to sum up what they're doing, they're taking the corner lot you see there, and they're separating it out into two different lots to provide more usable space. They're also limiting the width of the access area that you see on the larger lot to provide just a drive aisle area on State Line Road. This is one of those site plans that is being, has been approved for a truck commercial parking yard. Yes, so this will be the first one. As you can see, there's a huge buffer line down Tulane as well as the south side. It does not touch any of the residential properties, and we did ask them to limit that visibility along State Line, which is what this revision's doing, so it's just an access point to get in and out. There's nothing to be presented here for that, but I will tell you, it is a secured access gated facility. It's got a guard office, and it's also got a cleanup station in it. Will be a great asset to us. But this is the revisions to the subdivision to make that site plan happen. It was voted unanimously in favor by the Planning Commission.
I make a motion we approve item number seven on the planning agenda.
A second.
On item seven, we have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion?
Will this be the first drop lot in the city?
We're not going to drop lot. You cannot drop. It has to be the, you cannot just drop the bags. It has to be on your rig. But yes, this will be the first one. We are working on a second one for the next Planning Commission, so that will make two, and it will give us approximately 400 stalls for storage of people's rigs and parking.
Any other discussion on seven? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application is by Cypress Realty Holdings Company. This is for a single commercial lot of 2.62 acres on the east side of Airways, and it's going to be just directly south of Royal Furniture. The next application for design review is for a hotel on this site. It is compliant with all of the bulk regulations set forth in the ordinance for a commercial lot and was voted unanimously without any comments.
And I'm looking at this one and the next one. Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
On item eight, we have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next application will actually be for the Staybridge Suites associated with the lot we just discussed and approved. It is the design review application for it. You'll see on the elevations on the comments, there was a call-out to bring some more height variation to it. There was a call-out to add some more of the blue slate color into it to not make it such a neutral zone area. They did require that masonry material to be used for the bottom floor to comply with our design regulations. Additionally, they had to add their decorative lighting, and we did some adjustments to the landscaping as well. They did concede to all that and have, as of today, submitted the changes per the Planning Commission, and with those changes, we did vote unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve that.
Second.
On nine, we have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallo.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our final application is for a design review for a two-story office building to be located on Lot 13. The office is a cobblestone subdivision, which will be on the south side of Goodman Road, just east of Snowden Lane. You'll see right there on the elevations, very similar to all the other two-story office buildings we have in that complex. We had some minimal comments regarding their photometrics, which they did concede to that, and there were some adjustments to their landscaping. What you see there as submitted was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission with no further comments.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item number 10 of the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
On item 10, we have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? On item ten, we have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Um, jump right in here. Uh, y'all know that we have been entertaining uh, potential contract with an electric service uh, company. Uh, the bid that we received was from a company called Path Lighting and we've been combing over that for several, several months. We've talked about it in these board meetings several times. Obviously, what's attractive um, to the city is, the first thing, is having uh, streetlights put back on in a hurry. You know, reducing the turnaround time when the streetlights are put there, obviously with LED lighting inefficiencies uh, in our cost of power. And that was a motivating factor as well. And so, we've, we've been through this and uh, we've talked about it heavily. Uh, looked at the proposal from Path, um, their recommendation, you know, based on their proposals, about a savings of about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Less than ten percent savings. Um, still a lot of unknowns, you know, we, when we look at uh, Entergy and the equipment and the manpower that they use to, to service our lights. And then we, we asked the questions over and over with Path, you know, how are you gonna be able to do this? And long way to tell you is, what I, one of the first things that I told Path when they first approached me two, two or three years ago is that the city of South Haven is too big to be an experiment. And, you know, if you can show me crystal clear that this is gonna be good for our citizens, it's gonna, you know, reduce the turnaround time of the streetlights being out, reduce our costs significantly, that's something that I could go before this board and advocate that we change. It would be a, a huge change, again, the first time this has ever happened uh, with the city of South Haven. And so, we've talked about it. Bradley and I have met with Whitney. Uh, Whitney, obviously, is, Bradley, obviously, with Public Works is, you know, oversees the current streetlights. Whitney is heavily involved with new developments, when the streetlights go in new developments. So, when we all talk about it together, we just don't have a comfort level to recommend that we do this at this time. It's ju- there's just not enough savings uh, for the unknowns and I'm not gonna name the projects, but y'all know that there was a massive project that the city of South Haven was involved in um, about twelve years ago, uh, that has been an absolute nightmare. And it was a similar situation where someone came in with, you know, cutting-edge technology and they were gonna save the city all this money on our, on our electricity. And it's just been an absolute um, joke since then with the uh, you know, the buildings that it's in. And this feels so much like that, that I'm just telling you, it's my recommendation to this board that we not do this at this time. And so, uh, there's not a, there's no, well, I guess we do have, do we have to, we did open the proposal, correct? Okay, so I'm asking the board to reject the proposal tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Yeah, motion Alderman Jerome, second of Alderman Hoots, um, open for discussion.
So, we would still pay Entergy the same way we're paying Entergy now, just supposedly less money because of the LED lights, correct?
No, this will be replacing Entergy where all Entergy does is provide the actual power and all the service that Entergy is doing now would be provided by a third-party electric service company. So, what the motion is and what I'm asking is that we not do that, that we keep it like it is. That way, Entergy will continue to uh, service, still own the fixtures and the poles and still provide the service.
So, is, I, I guess in the price that we pay per light, we are also paying like a service fee, I guess, that would go with that?
Well, we pay, we pay a rental fee uh, to Entergy that includes all of it. We've asked a lot of questions. Entergy, you know, they don't break it down, the cost, as much as I personally would like. Um, however, there are ongoing discussions with them on doing some LED conversions that are, are still gonna save the city money in power cost. Um, since we had our uh, heavy discussions, uh, probably six to eight months ago, when we were re- when, when I updated y'all that I was concerned about the turnaround time with the streetlights being out, uh, since then, there've been some personnel changes. We've uh, we feel like we've had better results. We feel like the, that the turnaround times have been shortened. That Entergy has stepped up to the plate, so to speak, and, you know, improved the turnaround times.
I've, I've noticed a lot more lights are working than what they were. I, I mean, I still ha- I'm still confused about how they come up with the price and lights and with Entergy, that is. Uh, because, I mean, there's not a meter on every, on every light pole, so you don't know how much electricity's actually going to the light pole. Even if they changed to LED lights, supposedly it'd be less electricity, but I, you know, would they really give those costs to, you know, those?
Well, they're, they're laughing in the back of the room. These are the exact questions that I bring up to them. That um, that if you're having savings, why are you not, and that discussion is ongoing. We're still having those discussions with Entergy. But I'm answering your question to let you know, I have, your exact questions are the things that I've asked them. That um, this concept of uh, we do this and we tell you how much it costs, you know, I've never been comfortable with that. Tell me, why does it cost that? Is it usage? Is it this pole? And they, I, I've just been, the reporters, they don't operate like that. It's, it's somewhat of, and I don't mean any disrespect towards Entergy, but it's somewhat of a monopolistic situation and that's what we're dealing with.
Well, I guess, I guess my question would be, this, this company that we're rejecting the proposal on, I mean, how do we know that they could save us money when Entergy may not reduce the fee that we're paying in for each light pole anyway, for the electricity?
No, if we went this way, then, then the poles would be the city's poles. Where they're owned by Entergy now, they would be owned by the city and they would be serviced by the service company. So, it would be a massive change. You would, as it is now, Entergy owns the equipment and services all the equipment. If we did this, it would be a ma- uh, monumental change. We would now own the poles and the fixtures and then we would hire this third-party service company to do the service work on them that Entergy is providing now. Then Entergy would just be providing electricity.
Right, but how would we, I mean, they would still?
The cost of the electricity?
Right.
If you can get them to tell you that, then you're a step ahead of me.
Exactly.
It's probably like, you know?
We'd still pay Entergy.
You're gonna pay them for the power, right? And, and it's not like, you know?
You're paying somebody to change the bulbs.
Exactly.
Who would put up new poles?
Not just that. I mean, there's a lot more work than that with poles and the company would put the poles up. Yeah.
I'm disappointed that we, that it didn't come out better, 'cause I mean, we've, we've been suffering. I've still got a, a, a light over on Brookhaven that's been out for three months and it's got red ta- they even put red tape around it two months ago and it's still out.
Well, now, I'm glad you brought that up. Just for the people that may be watching, this may help. There are times where it is not as simple as just changing a fixture. They're actually having to go in. They may be waiting on a park, things like that. So, anytime you see red on it, there's some kind of problem. They're having to wait on something to get it fixed. It's not just the, that the bulb was out or something like that.
I had one across the street from my house and they put the red tape up and whenever they came later, they were digging underneath the pole.
Yeah, it's more work that has to be done, yeah. But I, I will say this again, in all fairness, that since we've had the meetings with Entergy, the service has been tremendously better. And then, you know that we mass marketed that on all of our marketing channels with the city to encourage citizens to call Entergy direct. It, they asked us to do that. It allows them to track them better and to, and to respond to them faster. So, that information is on our website, but uh, anyone that just contacts Entergy directly, um, i- it should make it more efficient in getting a streetlight repaired quicker.
And their app. You can go to it on the map and hit the light and say that it's out. So, it's actually kinda cool.
And, and again, this is not um, you know, saying that, that I would never recommend that we look into this in the future. It's just, to me, it's just, my gut feeling is there're just too many, there's not a good enough track record and I don't wanna put the city of South Haven in an experimental-type situation. We just can't, there's too much money on the line and, and too much service and it's too important with streetlights. I just don't feel comfortable doing that at this point. Did I answer your questions?
You did.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, and so, the motion in the second was to turn down the quote and so, or the proposal, and so, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
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 No motion carries. Um, the next thing I wanna talk to you about, some good news to report to you. Um, y'all know that uh, with our budget, that we have invested a lot more money uh, with our police department. You know, our police department, every year, we've made a bigger investment. We've got an aggressive um, officer expansion plan and in addition to increase in pay with the largest pay raise ever in the history of the police department uh, in this recent year. And the good news to report is that our recruiting team, our police, have done an incredible job. Uh, they've, uh, they're doing different things, thinking outside the box. You know, using social media, using, using different recruiting tools that we've never used before. And I, and I commend our police department. They've done a great job. They fill the positions. So, all, all of our positions are full at this time. So, that's, that's a, that's a very rare thing, a very challenging thing right now for every police department in America, so that's a, that's an outstanding report to you. Along with that, I'm not gonna get into, please don't ask me any questions, I'm not gonna get into discussing law enforcement strategy on, in a public meeting or on social media, but you, you can imagine after the Uvalde incident, that a lot of people, you know, get upset about that. Then social media starts roaring. They wanna know what we do with the schools, this and that. And so, I've gotta let everybody know that there, for obvious reasons, we don't go in public and tell everybody what the strategy is. The message I will tell you is that we don't wait uh, till we watch CNN or Fox News and we see something like this before we start thinking about it. We're thinking about stuff like that when nobody else is thinking about it. So, there is a, there's a plan in place. Uh, the county uh, is also considering doing some different things to enhance the plan even more. We got future meetings set up with them. So, anyway, the message is um, to social media, um, I'm not gonna discuss that with you on social media. And I didn't wake up and start thinking about this when Uvalde happened. Uh, we think about stuff like this and talk about it a lot, okay? Um, the next thing, uh, if we can put the, the Parks Enhancement Plan, uh, y'all know, we, we left it at the last uh, meeting because we wanted to answer a few more questions, talk about it a little bit more. Uh, some of you have uh, contacted me with some more information, shared, you know, your ideas since then. And so, what I'm asking, what we need to do, this situation is a little bit different than eighteen. In two thousand eighteen, we had one big-ticket item. We had the soccer expansion, which was six million dollars. And most of the other items on there were under a million dollars. They were smaller. So, it was a situation where we did a bank loan really for soccer and then we just kinda funded uh, the others with the cash as it comes in. And so, my proposal would be um, in, into the financing of this, we could always do a bond. I really, I don't recommend that. I don't wanna get into the, all the detailed costs of doing a bond. Uh, I wanna keep it simple like we did in eighteen and just do a simple local bank loan and uh, do it and kinda piecemeal it together and then kinda watch as the money comes in. Um, and so, I'll get back with you on that. But what, the changes, after listening to, to all of you, remember that we're only talking about the top box right now. The, the second box are things that we've discussed, that we have plans, but we don't have the money for at this point. So, what I'm asking for tonight is the top box, as a professional courtesy to your Parks Director and to me, for us, there's a lot of work that goes into things before they come on this agenda to all of you. I'm asking for some direction for the board to tell me that you approve this contingent upon the funding. I made one little tweak to the uh, funds available. I thought we went a little bit on the low side. I tweaked that slightly. But again, nothing on here, it would all come back before you again to approve it. So, I'm not asking you to do something that you're not gonna have, uh, that would change your comfort level and having another chance to talk about it and look at it. But what I'm asking the board tonight to do is to, to, to vote on this plan and tell me, hey, are we in a, are we in agreement? So, the, the Parks Director and I can get together with doing the legwork to start preparing for things like this. Um, we would not, obviously, do anything, not bring anything before you. This sounds ridiculously obvious, but I have to say it, we would not bring anything before you without a funding mechanism. So, if the funds do not come in like that, then we would pump the brakes and we would only start the projects as we have adequate funding. The first three that you'll see on the list are ones that um, that are somewhat urgent. Like um, I think that we're all in agreement, and I wanna talk about it tonight, hammer this down, but I think we're all in agreement that we wanna invest in neighborhood parks. We, we've presented a detailed analysis to you last time uh, with which parks, what we're gonna do, that kinda thing. If you'll notice, again, in parentheses, it says Trails and Pavilions. This tourism money would be invested in Trails and Pavilions. The, things like um, you know, your maintenance things, your, your uh, playground equipment, things like that. That's stuff that we already have in our operating budget. We have that and we have a plan where we can rotate that. Where each year, we're replacing, you know, uh, playground equipment on one of the parks to keep it, keep them in better condition. So, that's ju- that's strictly the Trails and Pavilions. The roofs at Snowden Grove, I'm gonna say it again, uh, it's, Snowden Grove Park is a gem. Uh, you know, any city in America would, would uh, would die to have a Snowden Grove Park. It is a huge asset for our city. And, but it does have to have some maintenance. It's a twenty-two-year-old park. There's some things that, that are wrong out there. The roofs are leaking, faded, leaking. We have rotten wood in a quad D in the main, uh, the main pavilion that needs some work. And then the third thing is the volleyball. Um, this is, excuse me. This is somewhat of an, almost like I was, I think I was telling Alderman Jerome when he was asking the details. If you're gonna have volleyball, then this is almost an emergency purchase. Uh, now, on a Saturday, our volleyball program has exploded so much. We have so many more teams and so many more participants that come into the tournaments, that parking is an absolute nightmare. So, it's almost, so those three things, we would have the money like um, you know, with the, again, I'll bring the details to you, but on a bank loan, we could do those first three things now. And then easily, in the next, um, the rest of the time until two thousand twenty-six, we could get to the other things that are on that list. So, again, I tweaked it based on what a lot of you told me. Um, you know, it's, it's almost impossible. I can't read everybody's mind. I don't know unless I just get them out and have you rank them and do stuff like that. I just, we've never been like that before. I don't think that's really, I think we can talk about this and hammer this down. So, I'm asking for discussion tonight and to get, again, to give us direction on uh, the approval of the things in the top box right there.
I'll make that motion.
Second. So, we have a motion Alderman Flores, second of Alderman Gallagher, and let's, let's talk about it some more.
I'd like to see the splash parks and dog parks back toward the top, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Seeing you, and that's what I'm saying, you have, we have some disagreement on that. We, we have um, you know, and, and I'm, I'm trying not to do this because I, again, I, I just think that we're, I don't think that's who we are. We've never, we can go line by line and, and vote on each one, but please tell me we're not that kinda city. But um, but I think that, and y'all, again, if we need to vote on it, you know, do that. I think the concern about the, I think it's just a priority thing among most of the board, but again, y'all talk to me. You know, those are not huge ticket items and those are actually two things that we may could even, if we decided to do it, we may could even work that in with operational, annual operational funds, 'cause they're such low-ticket items. Um, but if you put those up there, again, I'm dealing with a limited amount of money. If you put those up there, what do you take off? Alderman Jerome.
I'd bump down parking lot resurfacing down to the bottom. I'm okay with the black vinyl fencing. But, you know, originally, when we talked about this time around, we were gonna focus a lot on neighborhood parks.
And we ha- we have.
Well, well, when you look at that top list, how many of those mention Snowden Grove?
Well, the parking lot resurfacing is also Greenbrook.
Okay.
The black vinyl fencing is also Greenbrook.
Yep.
Well, and the other-
But they both mention Snowden.
Right, and there's a reason for that, because Snowden is the most expensive one.
Outdoor tennis courts, Snowden.
Right.
LED lighting, Snowden.
Sure. Is there a problem with that?
No.
Is there, I mean Snowden, again-
But I'd like to focus, you know, do something else other than Snowden, you know, the splash parks and dog parks.
Flip over to the, uh, the next page.
You asked, I'm just telling you.
No, I'm, I'm answering your question, but I'm, but let's be fair and let's be real.
Actually, one of the question, it was an opinion.
Okay, but an opinion needs to be backed by fa- by facts. So, what I'm telling you, you can't say that every, there's your, there's your first line on the budget of all the parks. You can't say that that's not spread throughout the entire city. It is, but I'm not gonna make excuses for somebody for investing money in Snowden Grove Park. I think that's absolutely insane for somebody not to understand the value that Snowden Grove Park brings to the city. And, and again, I, I respect opinions, but bring the facts with it when you talk. Um, that, everything is not going to Snowden. But, let me finish. But there are things that have to be done at Snowden. Snowden is a huge investment. It, it is costly to do the maintenance Snowden. So, those things have to be done. Have you seen the parking lots at Snowden and Greenbrook?
Yes, sir, I've seen the parking lots.
Are you, you don't, you don't view those as a problem?
Not a priority over some other things.
Well, I don't think the rest of the board would agree with you, but we can find out. So, flip back, please, to the main screen. My point is that we're in a situation where we have a limited amount of money and so- And so we can sit here and talk about this for weeks and weeks, or we can come to a decision. If we have to vote line by line on every one of them, we'll do it tonight. But my point is, you've got to be able to give something up. If you're, if you're going to move something from the box below, you got to tell me what doesn't fit in the top box, because we have a limited amount of money.
That's why I didn't disagree with the new roofs. I don't disagree with the LED lighting. I don't disagree with the outdoor tennis courts, because I think at some point, tennis could probably be just about as big as baseball.
But you were suggesting that there was favoritism shown to Snowden Grove Park, which there is. There, it, it would be foolish, and I'll discuss that with anybody, it'd be foolish not to. Snowden Grove Park subsidizes all your other parks.
I'm just as proud of it as anybody else is.
60% of your operating budget is money that's generated at Snowden Grove Park. So why would there not be a large investment in Snowden Grove Park?
Because we said this time around, when we got penny for the parks, that-
What's the first item up there, Alderman Jerome?
Let me finish.
Yeah.
We said we would focus a lot more on neighborhood parks.
Which we are?
Well, one line. One line is neighborhood parks.
No, it's not one line. Please flip to the next page again. How many times have I got to go through this? Please flip to the next page.
Well, it's just the first line on the-
Is that one park, Alderman Jerome?
No, but it's just one line on the top.
It, it's broken down to all the parks.
Yes, sir.
The first page is, is just a spreadsheet, it's a summary page.
Yes, sir.
These, it's not broken down to one park, it's broken down to all these parks that are clearly shown right there. Anyway, I just, we'll disagree, I don't agree with you, but anyway, let's, let's move on.
And that's fine.
Mayor, what do we, what's our, our, refresh my memory, what's our neighborhood budget on?
It's 125 right now. Of course, we're starting budget talks, I mean, that can always be, you know, we've got some ability to adjust that, but, yeah, but 125. And you can do a lot with playground equipment with 125,000 dollars.
You know, something like, like over on Brookhaven-
Please flip to the summary page.
We've got, like the swing over there, you know, it's, it's so old, they don't make the brackets anymore. Is that not something we could take to a machine shop, take a bracket off and have a new bracket made since, I mean, then, you know, we'd have a swing set-
The solution to that, and that's what we've already talked about doing, I think Wes, I don't know if Wes has updated us publicly about that, but from a day-to-day standpoint, what we talked about is like, instead of doing systems, again, start breaking it down and do an individual. That way, it just gives us more flexibility. If you have something that does become, a part that does become outdated, rather than having to replace the whole system, you just replace that part.
Because you know, newer is not necessarily always better. I mean, like that swing set over there, just because they don't, the manufacturer's no longer in business and they don't have that bracket anymore, doesn't mean that a, a good machine shop couldn't build us some, you know, you know, 50 new brackets, and we could just replace the brackets on those swing sets we've got, and they're good for another 20 years.
Yeah, no, we do that. And you may not know, but we're, we're blessed to have Woody in our Parks Department, who is, this guy can fix anything. So what we do when he retires, I don't know. But anyway, he's, he's outstanding in replacing equipment like that. But, yeah, we're always looking for ways to, you know, to improve our flexibility and, and get the, get the parks in better condition.
And Alderman Jerome, just to put it up there real quick, if you just look at the math part of it, 51% of that money is not in Snowden Grove.
Okay.
So, I mean, just look at the numbers. So I, I understand where you're coming from.
Well, and the reason, I'll just be straight up with you. I don't mean any disrespect, Alderman Jerome, I like Alderman Jerome. But that sounds so much like the ridiculous Tommy Henley, that all y'all care about Snowden and all that, and, and that just, to me, that's not who you are. Are you, are you?
No.
Okay, well, that's what it sounds like. And, and that is such an old argument, it's so old, and, and it's not fact-based, it's ridiculous, it's actually stupid. I'm sorry, it just is. But, so anyway, I just want to make, let you know that when you start pointing out, well, Snowden got a dollar, why didn't they get a dollar? It just, it's just a ridiculous argument, it's not a, it's not good business sense. I'm not saying you don't have good business sense, I'm saying it sounds like that, that same old rhetoric is what it sounds like.
Well, I don't want to see us get into a fight, I mean, I think you-
Well, no fighting, we're talking about it. I mean, it's a, this is a big, this is a big decision.
I mean, I like the fact that, you know, what we're doing is we got a, an idea, we're going to approve the idea, and we're going to eventually, each item, once we come to it, or start doing it, we're going to, you know, talk about it more and approve it. So basically, what we're talking about is just, this is just give us a, a target.
Right, but you're not totally understanding either. Let me say this a different way. What I'm trying to tell you is from a day-to-day standpoint, for us to, there's a lot of contingencies to go in, things like this with timelines, prep, there's cost involved in prepping it. And so, what we've done in the past that's worked tremendously good, is we've had a general understanding of what a plan is. We don't, we may not all agree on every single thing, we may not all rate them. There's no way that, if you put Thanksgiving dinner out, that everybody's going to rate the, the dressing and the turkey and the cranberry sauce, everybody's going to have different preferences. It's not all going to, but as a group, we've never had a problem in the past by having a general plan to say, hey, look, you know, maybe that's not my top priority, but I, I get the value of it, so I'm with you on that. And if it comes down to it, then maybe it's a four or seven vote. I mean, I, I hate that. I don't ever want it to be like that. But what I'm telling you is that we have never been a city, under my administration and with this board, that spun our wheels. We've always been decisive, e- even if we didn't agree on every single thing, we've been decisive. So what I'm telling you, from a day-to-day standpoint, your Parks Director and your Mayor need to have an idea what the point, like that the board is going to approve a plan. And if, if not, then you talk about slowing it down to a snail's pace. If we're bringing every project in one at a time, we won't get these done in four years. Yeah. So we've heard from a couple, talk to me, Alderman Flores, I mean, do you like the plan, or?
I'm good with the top part for the next four years. Absolutely.
I'm glad you put the black vinyl fencing up there.
Well, again, I'm listening to the majority of the group, and nobody, I promise you, and there's nobody in this room tonight that loves to put a smile on people's face more than me, but you under, if you will step back and think for a second, again, trying to match everybody's wish list is, is not a, it's not possible. That's why, in the past, I felt like our board has done a tremendous job of listening to the recommendations of the people that are involved in the day-to-day operations, which is your Parks Director and your Mayor. There's, there's reasons why we have these values. It's not that we don't like the other projects. I wish that we had 42 million extra dollars, which is in the second box, and do them all. But we don't. And so, I'm charged daily, I get the phone calls daily. Mayor, how about the parking lot at Snowden and Greenbrook? Have you, have you looked at the parking lot? On a Saturday, I got people texting me pictures of the parking overflow at, at the, at the arena. So that's all I would ask y'all to do, is to remember that we don't just pull something like this out of our back pocket. These are data-driven decisions that we've listened to our citizens, we've seen it firsthand, and that's why we prioritize them this way. And basically, we're asking, you know, to give us some direct, you know, be fair with us and give us, you know, give us some general direction, even though you still know that they're coming back before you to approve the, or to accept the bid.
Well, in the past, we've, we've approved plans, and it's kind of been a moving target, and we've moved things up and down as money became, funds became available or not.
Well, and things are gonna, the bids, as you know, are not always going to come in like you want them either.
Correct, so, and we may have to make a decision based on what the bids come back as. But as far as planning and getting things rolling, the top plan right there, I think we wish that.
But there's no way, let, let me paint this picture for you. There's no way that I can go to a citizen and say, hey, I think that we ought to get down here, and we ought to build an indoor tennis facility, but I'm not interested in the conditions of the parking lot or the light fixtures that, the lights at Snowden cost about $1,000 to repair every time that, it's like, not every weekend, almost every weekend now, that one of them is going out. So it's becoming an inefficient use of our money by not fixing that. So how do I go to, attack, that doesn't make any sense that I would go to somebody and say, hey, I want to build this down here below, but I know I got major maintenance issues with a money-making park, the most highly-used park in the city by far, and I'm not fixing those. Do you see my point?
I agree.
It just doesn't make any business sense.
I think we're overthinking this. I think we're all, all in favor of going ahead and doing it.
Okay, is there a motion? We got a motion?
I can, I'll make that motion.
All right, roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Just again, trying to extend the same courtesy that I would ask of you to give everybody a chance to, you know, to hash it out, talk about the plus and the minus. So we'll move on with that. That is actually the last thing I have. Next on the agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a city attorney's legal update.
I have two quick items. First item is just entering to the minutes, the, I had emailed to the board last, or earlier, or last week about the order, which is approved by the Michigan Park Revenue, authorizing on sale premises of alcohol from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, I mean, 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. That was approved by M D O R at the request of the board at the last meeting. So that is effective immediately for on sale premises. The ordinance allowing for off-sale, off-sale, off-sale will go into effect 30 days from the last meeting, which I think was May 17th. So, but for restaurants, the 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM is effective immediately. Next is just also entering to the minutes as well, that the previous meeting, we approved the Schindler Plus, or Schindler Plus contract for elevator maintenance at Snowden. The dates for, originally, it'd be going into effect of March of 1st of 2023. That will now go into effect October 1 of 2022. The warranty period is a little bit shorter than was anticipated by the contractor. It was supposed to go into effect end of August, however, due to their mistake, they